And we'll start with the Pledgeable Agent.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America. To put your tongue in the words of the sentence, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hey. First item on the agenda, the Armenia Drive-In. We have John, you're probably done with that.
Yeah.
You actually can't do that enough.
How about Renia just address them?
Did Bill, did Bill walk in?
Bill hasn't walked in yet.
So you can go and do the, you can do the media fishing game.
Sure.
I'm gonna do that.
Okay. Yeah, we can pull up mine.
Sure.
You might go ahead and start the media fishing game, or?
Sure, I'm gonna let John Bellier for my own.
Okay.
I have to get the pleasure of being in another one of your meetings tonight, too. So I have to scoot about three minutes apart from folks.
Dave, you could put your mic on.
Yeah, if you could grab a mic also. Introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name is John Bellier, I'm an engineer with Renia Engineering Design. Unfortunately, Richard mentioned he can't stay this evening, so he asked me to fill in a briefing on the project. The Armenia Fishing Game Club would like to propose an underground firing range that currently will replace the area where they're, they have an existing firing range above ground currently. The project would basically take an above-ground firing range and put it underground. We propose to have, excuse me, concrete pipe trenched along these areas. Both a, well, a 300-yard run, two 300-yard runs, excuse me, two-
300 yards, yeah, 300 feet?
300 feet.
100 yards.
100 yards, I apologize. Two 50-yard runs, and then two 25-foot runs which will be used for handguns, for pistol shooting. Basically, the project will do two things. Predominantly, it will mitigate any sound that the range currently experiences. And will also add a factor of safety. There'll be protocol in place to better, do a better job of backstop for the firing range. And also, a system to verify that no one can be in the range using it when someone's at the target or changing out any of the targets that maybe need to be changed or put, as it may be. The project won't increase the membership anyway. We feel that there's no increase then to parking. There'll be no increased demand for water and wastewater. And the, the system is designed with a small area where it's graded into a nice 5% ramp, which will ramp down into these, into this initial building, which is where they'll enter. And actually, they'll have a small bench area, you can see here, to put their equipment. And then they'll actually sit down and look down the tubes, concrete pipe, and fire at the targets. Shortly after the, the opening to the pipe, there's a vent system on each one of the pipes, which will take the exhaust right out to the atmosphere, and will have, always have negative pressure. You'll never get a situation where it'll back up into the enclosure. Let's see, if you'll excuse me. Things I'd like to point out tonight are that the initial range fired into this area, into an above-ground backstop here. The range is actually now moved inside the setbacks for the property, bringing up the code. And also, we'll have a very robust backstop system for catching the bullets. It'll have two layers of wood and a backing material in between them. It's an industry standard, which we have more information coming. And then followed by that, if that were to escape those two, that barrier, it would hit into a clean sand area. Again, all in a structure. So it's a very, very safe practice. And then I guess finally, it's, we really feel this is quite a simple project. Basically, we're taking something that's existing, making it better, making it safer, making it less irritant to anyone in the area that has an issue with the noise. And finally, basically, we're using, it's a, it's a same use that's currently existing. We're not creating any new uses or accessories.
We just got the review from our engineer back today, I mean, actually about 3:00 o'clock this afternoon, so. Nobody's had a chance to go through that yet, I mean, this is a major project, um, she's got a bunch of, uh-
Norm, that's one thing that we wanted to talk about.
Sure.
Rich Renia. Did you see the, uh- Yeah, we got that today. And we're in a bit of a disagreement on the major project, project status. So we want to try to work that out with Julie, we're not sure where she's getting that from. When we go through the criteria, we, we feel that this project is under everything.
Okay.
And we're even under the 10,000 square feet of disturbance. So we'd like to work with her and Dave, and if we have your permission, that would be good. We'd like to work with them as the first order of business to get that hammered down.
Yeah, and we haven't had a chance to look at it, so.
Right.
Quite possibly, you might be right.
But that was the, the biggest thing that struck us on that, saying, well, we don't think this is a major project.
Okay. We'll take a look at that, then.
Thank you, Rich.
So at this point, I think it's a matter of us taking a look at what Julie has written and making determinations as to which way it has to go.
Do you plan to test the soil for lead?
We won't be disturbing any of the area that was currently used for the, the existing range. We have feelers that at this time, there's no need to test any of the soils. The soils we're disturbing are simply, we're basically just digging a trench from one end to the other.
And the soils are staying on site? If you said that, I missed that.
Yes, I believe the soils will be staying on site.
So you're saying, okay, no truck, you don't need to bring anything in either?
Just any select stone or hill to go around and pipe like you normally would with a pipe.
You said that it wouldn't increase membership, but I'm actually interested in becoming a member, so is it open to new members, or?
You put your brain in there.
Yeah, anybody can fly there.
Okay.
We, I guess I, I don't foresee a significant increase.
A significant increase, okay.
I doubt we'll see more than a small percent.
Also, a lot of gun clubs do have waiting lists? Most of them do, yeah.
Will you be using this, you know, in the wintertime and at night, and how about it's underground, and when it's raining, and all those kinds of things?
Well, that's a good question, I'm not really sure of the answer.
I would think that it's going to definitely open it up for more seasonal use. And that's, that's why it's a positive for the game club to do this.
So it would probably change from a seasonal use to an all-year use?
Well, it gets used this time of year also.
Oh, it does?
Oh, yeah, you go out there, you can hear it.
Okay.
Yeah, you can use it, it's just your fingers can hold it.
It could use less, but it does be used.
Oh, is there lighting inside, so you can use it at night?
Yeah, well, since the whole thing is subterranean, that, it would always be right in the dark on the inside, so yes, there is light.
So the whole thing is subterranean, so it'll just look like a lawn on, on top of it, or?
For the most part, you'll see just the, just the tips of the three areas where the law targets, the types of structures.
And was that membrane, it was like a rubber, big, how do they, do they have to change it out after so many shot?
I'm not sure of that.
I've seen some, I don't think you sent it to us, some stats of that?
Um, what I have is, is actually just a single copy.
Right, I saw that.
It's called a live-fire ballistic road block. And I'm sure we can get more information as-
Yeah, no, I had that, that's what gave me that question with, I wasn't sure, do they have to change it out? Now, that's something to figure out later.
Considering that it's a, you know, wood on both sides and then sand behind it, I, I don't know if there, you'll see any failure, and-
Well, not the failure part, the change, is if the bullets just stay right in there, I would imagine, being right?
I would assume, yes, they stay right in there. Maybe over time, if it, if they're out of use, they would have to take them out and replace them.
Right, right.
But I don't think that would be self-evident.
Yes, like, almost like a, they play in the playgrounds, like a rubber membranes, they put in like the, that's what it said, the stats on that.
To be honest, you probably-
You're not sure, it's all right.
Yeah.
It's all right.
You just got that.
Oh, not right now, Tom.
Does the NRA have any guidelines on the construction of, you know, indoor shooting ranges?
I would not know that, but I-
I was just curious as to whether or not you were, you know, if they had guidelines, whether you were meeting some of them, or?
That's an interesting point, and we'll, I think, look into that.
I'd definitely be a lot safer, that's for sure.
Now, were there any other issues on the comments that Julie had on her memo that you folks had, or?
As Rich said, I think that quite a few of them are based on the fact that it's a minor versus a major project. And I think once that's resolved, that the rest should fall right out.
All right, should be able to follow up on that tomorrow, I think.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
So there's not going to be any alterations to the other building, that's the existing building that's there?
No, these buildings remain as its.
Okay, demolish one building to build the two.
Oh, okay.
They are?
Taking down one building.
Since they're on the plan.
I thought that they-
Yeah, there's, there's one building here-
Oh, yeah, the, yeah.
That they're, we're actually going to remove and replace, with a smaller square foot structure.
Larissa, will we just get a, a digital copy of the plans for this?
You did receive a digital copy of the plans, it might have gone to your Armenia, and why, if you haven't gotten hooked up, but?
Um, no, yes, I'm back on, when was that sent, do you know by chance?
You guys can have it one day.
Two and a half weeks ago, I sent it on the 13th.
Yeah, okay, on the 13th.
Could I just ask you a quick question about the ventilation? Because I know that in indoor shooting ranges, ventilation is a big issue.
Right.
So are the, are the vents close to where the boxes are for the, where they shoot? Are they vents near where the bullets hit the wall?
No, the actual vents are all in the, near the firing area.
Okay.
They're within, I think, 15 feet of the firing area, 15, 20 feet, something like that. So yeah, it's going to be negative pressure constantly, they're going to sit there, and you'll be able to feel it.
Yeah, okay.
And it'll just go right up and out.
Anybody else have any questions, huh? Larry?
Thank you very much.
And now that we have our forum, we can go ahead and move on to the Armenia Drive-In.
Norm, um, Rich Renia had to leave, so he would have been, I know, he had to leave, so he would have been speaking for John at the moment, discussing the site plan, so I'm figuring we can tell him what we want with Renia, no?
Hello?
Hello, John.
Alrighty, so I think where we left off was September, maybe last year, and it was in regards to the signs. So that was the big holdup, in terms of getting all the variances, letting you know how many square feet all the signs come to, and then which, which ones aren't conforming, which ones aren't, and then what the verdict is going to be on what we keep and what we kind of take down. So, we spoke with the zoning board, we granted our variances on their side, and so at this point, we submitted to Julie, and she just returned to us some comments. I can address all those comments, it's kind of a little bit moving backwards with, in terms of a few of the comments that she had. It was in regards to the rules, which are dated back in 13, and I have those in front of me, I didn't send out a digital copy, but I wanted, if you want to go through everything, I can kind of-
Well, I guess we've got to kind of figure out where we're at right at this point, John, because, I mean, basically Julie's saying a lot of the materials that were discussed and approved by ZBA aren't on the current site plan.
Yeah, so it, that has to do with Renia a little bit, and it was, I basically took what, what Julie came up with, I submitted it to Renia, and there might be some discrepancies with, you know, where certain signs are supposed to be. So we spoke today with Renia, and he's going to be changing and adjusting it according to what Julie had mentioned in her comments.
What Julie told me, for what it's worth, is that, you know, the planning board approved a site plan for the drive-in, you know, whenever that was, a year ago. And then the site plan, the amended site plan that was submitted with this application, didn't include a whole bunch of things that you guys had previously approved on that plan, there were some notes, and there were some agreements that you guys had come to about how certain things were going to be handled, and that was on the plan, and that, that wasn't on the plan, it just needs to be added to this plan. And, you know, once it is, you know, then the additional items that, you know, John has, changes that he's made out there, those also will be on the plan, and then once you've got a complete plan, you know, then you can move forward. So I think that's what John is saying, is that a lot of those things are now going to be added onto the plan.
Yeah, they're going to be added on the plan, and a few of the things that she also mentioned in her comments are already on the plan, and have been already solved, and, and so I just wanted, you know, bring that to your attention as well.
Yeah, this, we, we got to get it together as far as the one plan, because I was reviewing it, we had two separate ones today that we were looking at, and there were discrepancies between one to the other, you know, the restroom location was different on one versus the other, they were both dated the same date.
Yeah, that has to be something with the engineers, maybe they didn't change the date on their plan. But I, the latest copy that I received from Crawford, and it was actually the CAD file as well, that I submitted to Renia, it was, and they, and they took that right off the file, it was the 6/13 date on, on the site plan. So they made an error in where they placed it on the leach field, and then they, they moved it over.
Yeah, one had it within the leach field, the other one had it within the driveway a bit, too.
Yeah, it was a little bit of a tip in the driveway, but obviously, that's not, that's not the case, so.
I, there are a couple things-
Sure.
Just for my own peace of mind, I think this is one of those situations where you want to separate some of the issues, so that we're not dealing with all of them at once. So one of them is definitely that Julie's, I think her main thing, as Dave said, is to get everything on one plan, even stuff that we've agreed to. But in addition to that, she also seemed to be saying that in 2013 and 2014, your permission was temporary?
Yeah, we had a temporary CFO to operate.
And that therefore, there, we had a different kind of approval that we had to give you this year, if you wanted it not to be temporary, right?
So we're going for a permanent CFO.
Okay.
That's, yeah, so that's what we're, and that's what we were aiming for, obviously, from the beginning. It was just that some of the, some of the, the site plan wasn't exactly as it, everything on the site plan wasn't approved, and that had to do with the signs mostly, so we backtracked with the ZBA last year.
And then the sign thing, didn't you have something passed the zoning board fairly recently, and that's pending planet, planning board?
Pending planning board approval.
So that's probably one of the things we have to address more quickly rather than less, in order to get it back in your court, so that you can add that to the plan?
Absolutely.
There's no reason you shouldn't be able to get all that together on one part, and back to us for the next meeting.
Yeah, so, just so, you know, the ZBA approved over 25 variances for various signs out at the, the drive-in. So once those variances were granted, they come back now to the planning board, and all those signs that the variances have been approved for, as well as other signs that variances were needed, now have to get placed on a sign plan, which she's done. But there's been, they need to be changed slightly, because some of the signs are not in the right location, and that was one of Julie's comments. So the zoning board is done, there's no need to, for, to go back to the zoning board. The only issue is, right now, is that some of the variances are contingent, there's only, I think, two. Two variances are contingent upon the planning board's approval of sign bonuses for two signs. And so you guys need to, you know, issue those approvals, if you don't issue those approvals for that, for that, those two signs, which are actually out on the road, then those variances will, will be null and void, basically.
And that would change his project.
That would change his project, right.
So we should deal with those, if we can, as soon as possible, I mean, you should-
Yeah, that's why I'm-
If you guys are saying that we need a document in order to do that, then we need that document, I guess.
Uh, yeah, absolutely, I mean, I have everything here in terms of what we could, I mean, everything's been submitted, in terms of what can be granted as a, as a, the sign bonuses, and that has to do with the new proposed sign. You received that, I believe, in the-
Is that the one with the red marking on it?
Yeah, it's the red marking on the-
Who did that, is that yours, or someone who works with the planning board, who did the red?
Um, who designed it, you're saying?
We're talking about the one with pictures of all the signs, and then little red bubbles saying, this sign, we suggest this and that.
You're talking about the sign, you're talking about the submission, you've got some two different pages here.
Yeah.
Okay, so which documentary are you talking about, go ahead, because I'm-
He's talking about a sign.
The actual proposed sign that we have for the schedule, you received that, it has the red bordering, I thought that's where you were referring to.
Okay.
So which one are you referring to?
No, we can go with that one first, I'm interested in the other one as well, as, because it's unclear who did the document. But the one that you're talking about, it's, what form is the document in?
The document that was submitted?
The document that went to the zoning board?
Yes.
And then they passed a bonus pending our approval?
Yes.
So then we just want to look at that one thing, that sign?
Sure.
Okay, and so you're saying that's been submitted, in, specifically by itself?
The now showing sign?
It's the now showing sign, that's the proposed.
The now showing sign, okay.
Yeah, that has, that's going to be showing our schedule for the week.
Okay.
So it, it would, it would take away what the existing Armenia Drive-In sign that looks like a cloud, and it's, it's in that shape?
Okay, so this is a proposal, taking away one thing and putting something else?
Yes, putting a new.
Is that in writing somewhere? The proposal?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's the document that I would like to see, is that something?
Well, Larissa had already submitted, I believe, that proposed sign.
Everything that went to the ZBA for signage, you received.
Okay, did we get their response, then, so we can sort of go through?
Yeah, everything is pending you, so their response is, they've approved their end of it, and they want, you know, your approval as well. Or not they want, but that's, you know, that's the next step, and, and so it comes down to, you know, if it's something that you would like to see.
Okay, because you sent us, I mean, we got a bunch of documents.
Yeah.
And I think, I'm trying to make it easier for you by focusing in on one small section of it, which relates to the ZBA approval, and then we can move on to the rest of it.
Sure, so-
So if we can see a copy of what the ZBA approved, that's probably one page, right?
Yeah, that's the, that's part of the resolution, that they've approved, that was in, in last meeting that we had.
Has, has the planning board got a copy of the ZBA resolutions and the, and the chart that was adopted?
The chart, yes, they got that.
Yeah, we've got, we've got Julie's memo yesterday, really, so. We got to pull, there'll be pieces being pulled together between now and the next meeting. You guys get your, your plan submitted, and everything in the right place, and everything included?
Okay.
We talked about, and we have, you know, we've got the two weeks to review the, you know, the resolution.
The site chart, the pictures, everything else that was submitted, what Julie had commented, and put it all together.
It sounds like what Bill is looking for, is he needs the resolutions from the zoning board, the approval resolution for the variances, the signed chart that was attached to that resolution.
That was given.
Okay, all right.
Except for the resolution, I think.
Except for the resolution.
And then probably also the secret resolution and the neck deck that the ZBA issued, for all the sign variances.
Yeah, I'll send them off.
Okay.
That's going to pretty much piece it together for me, as far as what needs to be done.
I think so, I think that will help us, and then it'll be back in his court, I mean, as long as we approve it.
Well, yeah, it's probably back in his court now, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward. What about the county referral? What else out there, David?
Well, we're, I talked to Larissa about this, is that, you know, because the, the site plans have to be, you know, changed again to include all this material that was left off, and sort of updated, we're going to wait on the county referral until all that material comes in, we have one plan.
Right.
Because if we sent them a piecemeal plan that was kind of just half-complete, that's likely to create more issues. And we want to try to, you know, speed the process along, and that would be the best way to do it. So as soon as he gets us the plan, you know, and Julie looks at it and says that her issues have been addressed, then we can refer to the county.
Yeah, a little bit, part of the issue was, you know, we had this plan completed about a week ago, and then Julie just got it back, so we didn't have a chance to really, you know, make any, any changes to it, and she's made some comments that I'd like to address as well. Let me actually pull that up. So the first thing then is, I'm going to update the site plan according to what Julie's comments were. So that was just an error on, on the engineering side of things.
Yeah, just to make sure you've, you've got the-
All the signs match where they're going.
Yeah, the restrooms, like the kennel, that, the dog, dog house, that?
Yeah, so, yeah, so-
Is that a part of it?
Well, this is the issue, the dog box originally was proposed, and it was just, it's just a litter box, basically, for the dog. So the issue came where, what if all the dogs get together and they start barking, and then the neighbors have an issue with that? We don't have any neighbors, but, you know, so we said, if that's going to cause an issue, we'll remove it. And then she just kind of mentioned, well, if it's, if it's going to be on there, if it's not going to be on there, and we can do whatever's easiest for the planning board.
I think, since you guys built it already, just put it on the plan.
Yeah, it, yeah, and it is already on the plan.
Okay, and that's why you need to do that.
So we wanted, we wanted to see if that was going to, if that was an issue with the planning board, if it is, then we'll remove it, if not, then we'll keep it. And that also goes with the bike rack, the bike rack originally was, was, was put on the plan. Then there were some issues, you know, this dates back two years ago, so I can't remember exact issues, so we removed it, and, and now she's, you know, she's recommending that we put it back on there. If that's okay with the plan, with the planning board, we'll definitely do that. If it's not, if, you know, if it's not going to create any additional issues, we'll, we'll definitely keep that there.
Don't worry about that being, I should, okay?
A bike rack could be nice, because-
Yeah, we thought so as well.
I just lean it on the fence, but maybe they were in order, it would be-
Yeah, yeah.
Did Julie say there was an issue with the bike rack, or just that it was a new thing?
Well, the, the issue was that it wasn't on there anymore, and she wa, she was recommending that we put it on there. So we said, you know, we'll put it on there if it's, if it's okay with the planning board. So, no, that was one comment, so thank you for that. Then there were some comments in terms of the vehicle queue limits, location of external speakers, the rules, the fluid spill prevention and cleanup plan, plan for rain events, we have all of that documentation, and that was submitted back in six of 13, it's about a year and a half ago. So I can resubmit that, I mean, it's already in the plan, so, but she's, she's bringing it back up again, I'm not quite sure why.
I remember, yeah, all of that being submitted before-
Yeah, so all the rules, we have a whole prevention plan.
What you've got here, resubmit that, that's out there.
Okay, so, and then the vehicle queue limit, I mean, she's asking for traffic control device, services actually as well. It's all in the plan as, as we speak. The restrooms, that will be updated, this is 2A, the restrooms will be updated to show the water in the sewer. There, there aren't any lines right now, but we have, we have the actual documentation and the health, health department approvals from it. It just needs to be shown on the site plan, so that'll be updated. Uh, we have photographs, and as she mentioned, photos-
John, I'm going to interrupt you for just a second, what's your timeline on this? Because Julie's sick tonight, and it seems like it would be helpful to you to have feedback from her on some of these things. You're telling us, but we're going to want to hear her opinion, she wrote the comments.
No, absolutely.
She's saying what she wrote.
No, he's saying what she wrote is wrong in some cases, misinformed, yeah.
Well, not, not that, not that it's wrong, but it's already been approved.
Yeah, just something that we're revisiting, that we had discussed before.
I would like to hear her sign that, because she just wrote the comments.
Aren't the comments her side of it?
That's what I'm saying.
No, I mean, her side of it is when he says, that comment says something that's inaccurate, she says why that's true or not true.
What's inaccurate, what did she say is inaccurate?
Well, what's, the inaccuracy was, it's not an inaccuracy, it's just she's bringing it back up again in terms of a new comment, but it's already been addressed. So she's asking for location maps, zoning districts, parcel information, vehicle queue limits.
Based on what he just said, what she has, has to be in that drawing he's made.
Right.
Yeah, and I, all I'm saying-
So he's saying what he's going to do.
He's going to do what she says.
Yeah, I'm saying, I just, I have all the rules here that have been submitted back from 2013.
Yeah, it's not as important whether it has been, but that it will be, right, that's the thing.
Okay, so it needs to be resubmitted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think the problem, John, was that, I, I know you submitted all that stuff, but it wasn't on the plan. A lot of it wasn't on the plan that got submitted that's going to get approved. It was on the previous plan that had been approved, it just needs to get back onto the plan, the amended plan, that's all.
Okay.
You know, so I don't think it's that big of a deal, I just think, just give this to Renia, just have her go through it, and just make sure that all these items, you know, are on the amended plan, and all the pieces that, of the previously approved plan, all the notes and everything, that include all those rules and all that stuff, that, that's all going to get transferred to the amended plan.
Okay.
Because I think that what we're trying to accomplish is to have one plan that gets approved, that contains everything, so the building inspector doesn't have to go and look at five different files to try to figure out, you know, the pieces of the application that were approved.
Okay, and part of this issue, I'm just, I'm just, you know, bringing it back to the board's attention, is that we've, you know, there was just some, where we left off, it was with the sign issue, and then it just- and then it just kind of, these things just resurfaced as of yesterday. So, you know, that's, you know, if there's anything that's missing, it's just because we just didn't know about it until this meeting.
Let's just get all that together, submit it for the next meeting, so we can get this stuff done.
Could we get in any direction on the proposed sign? If that's something that, you know, is the size okay, is aesthetic?
We haven't even had a chance to look at it.
Okay.
I did a picture of a sign a couple weeks ago. The red and blue.
Yeah, we're piecing all this stuff together.
Yeah, we'll just all put it in one, and not...
I think it looks nice, I mean, yeah, I didn't note the dimensions or the square footage of it, but I thought it was a nice-looking sign.
And I think everybody's probably, you know, gonna pretty much go with, if it's within what the ZBA, you know, is allowed to vary, or what the planning board's allowed to waive as far as the, uh, the bonuses go, I don't think there's gonna be an issue.
Okay.
Yeah, I...
I'm not gonna figure everybody out.
No, I, I pretty much agree substantively. I will raise a procedural issue, I was at the Association of Towns last week, and, uh, you know, what the, they told planning board people to go to was the ethics panel. And somebody asked a question about someone on a planning board recusing himself for his own proposal and addressing the planning board, and the ethics expert said, "That is something you should not do." So, yeah, it was a black-and-white answer. So, I'm just gonna bring that up, because I think it's, uh, something we should at least know about, separate and apart from the merits of this proposal, and we, what we've already done.
Can you further explain what the, what the grounds were on that?
Regulations and what instructors say, that you shouldn't be representing yourself as a member of the planning board with your project.
Why not? I mean, what is the ethical issue? If you recuse yourself, then, I mean, Dave, what would you say?
You know, I, I don't particularly see a problem with it, I mean, he's a property owner in town, and he's got a right to petition his government, which is what he's doing. And he's recused himself, he's stepped back off the table, and he's, you know, presenting it. I mean, I guess if the planning board is concerned about it, um, we can take a further, closer look at the town's ethics law.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, this, this process is pretty much completely tough.
Yeah, and I mean, it seems if, like you say, if he recuses himself, it's perfectly ethical, so... What were the instructor's reasons? Why did he, did he, was he clear, or a little bit vague about why he thought it was unethical?
No, she was, she was clear. She said, "You should have someone else represent you in that situation." Because you work with the people on the planning board all the time, in the, in the context of adjudicating, and it's, it's just a fuzzy, you're clearly broaching the fuzzy line, I'm paraphrasing, obviously, where, um, your, your responsibility as a board member is, is, uh, influences, or contributes to, or is connected to your other role.
I wonder if it would be any different, though, if John hired an engineer to represent him, and we were aware of that being his engineer?
Well, he did, but the engineer had to leave. So, I mean, that's kind of, that's kind of the situation, so...
Yeah, so...
I, I, I think that, that it's preferable, you know, not to have, you know, John up there, but by the same token, I mean, I don't...
Is there any difference, though, if it's John or John's engineer?
Yeah.
We can talk ethics all night here, and not get anywhere.
I mean, if this helps, by the way, I didn't get on the planning board until, you know, ninety percent through this project. So, I haven't been up here as a planning board member for, you know, it's been dated two years ago, here. So, are we okay with, you know, I'm gonna update the site plan, and then we'll give that to you? All right, thank you very much.
All right, Silo. So, um, Pedro Torres, Silo Ridge. The, so we submitted our application back again, uh, last week, last Thursday? Thursday, Thursday, Friday, I'm sorry. Uh, all the plans are also available online, they're also at the library, Town of Amenia, and as well, there's another copy here at Town Hall.
What is the request of the URL, please, for online?
It's the same one as before. Siloridgesecret.com. So, you know, we had a meeting, uh, prior to this, uh, with the consultants, they're gonna be reviewing all the, all the comments, and then, uh, the goal would be that by two weeks from now, thirty days from now, get all the comments to discuss back, uh, the completion of the, um, of the, of the documents. Uh, in the meantime, we're still working with the planning board, uh, with, and the consultants to change the request protocol, as well as the, uh, as well as the, trying to finalize the bonding documents. I don't know if anybody has any comments, or if they've been able to see anything, or review, or any questions.
I'm just passing information along to the rest of the board members. With the meetings that have been going on, the field change protocol is coming together pretty well, I think we're getting towards the end of that process. It sounds like we've got agreements in theory, if nothing else, on a couple of the bigger issues that need to be resolved. One being, um, change, uh, changes to the golf course and grading changes as they go forward. How's that gonna be managed? How's the oversight gonna be provided? When are, um, are they required to come in and request through the planning board process changes to what they would be doing? So, criteria being developed there, and then the other part was, um, to Dr. Clemmons and some of the other, other consultants, um, buffers and ponds and things, you know, recent figures a little bit, which is part of the, uh, course design process, things do change somewhat, um, as they, as they build, and, uh, you know, how do those changes get implemented, approved, reviewed? And, um, what are the impacts on the buffers? So again, they're gonna be working with Dr. Clemmons. I think they've come again to a theoretical agreement as to how that could be managed to ensure that the water qualities are controlled, the, um, erosion, the habitat provided proper buffers, so, those are the last couple things that needed to be, uh, resolved there. And the other part that we're, um, I'll be meeting, or speaking with Dave and Julie over the next couple of days, trying to come up with a, a plan of attack, for the review process, and all those, all the documents that were submitted. Silo supplied us with a, um, a document that, uh, shows which items that were submitted had large changes, which items that were submitted had minor changes, and which items that were submitted, resubmitted had no changes. So we're gonna try to kind of break it, break it down somewhat, and, uh, you know, for each consultant, uh, who has to do what, who's a primary reviewer, who's a secondary reviewer, and where did the crossovers occur, just, uh, probably some kind of plan for that process. That should be done within the next couple of days, we have, uh...
Yeah, I think that the goal is to try to avoid, uh, what we had, where we had, a lot of the, a lot of the consultants duplicating comments over and over. 'Cause that, that made it pretty, pretty hard for us to, to finalize the review at the end of the day.
Well, and again, I think at this point, we, everything that has been changed has been discussed quite extensively with the consultants, with Silo, and with different board members at various meetings, so people have a better feel for what to expect when they read these documents, or what they anticipate reading into these documents, so that, um, there shouldn't be any, any surprises, or many surprises. We'll find out over the next, over the course of the next couple of weeks, time of month.
So, so just to be, so the goal would be that we would receive comments prior to the, the second meeting from now, right, which would be...
A month from now, correct?
Yeah, just, I'm just trying to figure, so, 'cause I look at it more from meeting dates, so we can meet with...
The desire would be to have those comments in within the month.
Yes, so, so I would put it inside.
And be able to, and hopefully be able to, you know, deem the application complete, and schedule public hearing, but we don't know, until the review...
No, but, all that I'm trying to figure out is, thirty days from now is essentially the next board meeting.
Correct.
So that's why I...
Well, yeah, February's a strange number.
You have March twenty, I think, I think the next meeting.
So, we submitted February seventeen, so we put us, March twenty-fifth is the next meeting? Second meeting, yeah.
March eleventh, and then March twenty-fourth.
Yeah, yeah, no, it would be the second. So we just wanna make sure that if we can receive it prior to that, and discuss it with the board at that time.
I think people will be doing what they can to get that accomplished. Any questions from any of the board members on what's gonna be going on at this point, or where we're at?
I think we're getting closer, we're close.
Dave, you have any issues or comments? Anybody else, Pedro, on mic? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have mine here. Did everybody, well, everybody just got them, tonight's agenda, we're gonna do it anyway.
I emailed them this morning, if they saw, but I did give them, I emailed them, and I...
Have everybody had a chance to review it?
I didn't get a chance, no. Um, is it okay if they get things like that, like maybe three days ahead of time?
It would be okay, if I could have done it three days ahead of time, I guess.
No problem, just because...
That's fine, we can hold on, just wait until we get a chance, and you'll have other minutes to review together.
Thank you.
Question, can I ask a question?
Do you use the microphone, please?
Yeah.
Thanks, Mary. It's just a very simple question. What, will there be a reopening of the public hearing?
Yes.
When?
When?
Well, when we determine that the, the application is going to be complete. They were hoping for a little over a month from now, but, you know, there remains to be seen.
Public hearing didn't officially close.
No, it did not.
It's a reopening, it's a continuation of public hearing. That's still open comments, they've been coming, for having, John, too. Anybody else, Tony?
That's it, Ben here.
Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, is it, are we working?
You are, yep, I can hear you.
All right, the most important fact about the gun range that neither one of them mentioned is this is going to be one of the few handicapped, accessible gun ranges.
Well, they did, they did mention the ramp, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't put it in context, yeah, yeah.
That's the reason for the ramp being almost level, to blacktop that back to where the cars are parked.
You know, it's gonna be a nice benefit, yeah.
Plus, you wanted to join, and that would be great. You have to realize that that, too, is one of the few ranges that's open to rimfire. Rimfire? A shell comes, and you're twenty-two, and you rimfire. And it's a teaching tool for the kids. It's, this will fit that need. All of these things are incorporated in the plan.
Yeah, and they, they do training down there, so that's a part of the program, which is good, yeah.